Good evening, everyone. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Evanston. And the zoning ordinance empowers this board to hear references from the city council, applications for variances and special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, we will either make a final determination or send a recommendation to the city council. I'm Lori Summers, the current chair. Present here with me tonight are board members Matthew Rogers, Beth McLennan, Clara Weinberg, Scott Gingold, and Andrew Gallimore. We therefore have a quorum. Also present from city staff are Melissa Clots and Dennis Marino. This is a formal hearing, and we have rules that govern our proceedings. Our most important rule is that only one person may speak at a time. It is not just civility, but it is necessary to accurately record our proceedings. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have an opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our formal, normal procedure is that we hear first from the staff on the documents in the file. We will then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or repellent. After the applicant or repellent has completed their initial submission, any person who has a legal interest in real property located within 500 feet of the property that is the subject of the application or appeal may then present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek a continuance of the hearing. Next, others who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. When all opposing testimony and other statements have been received, the applicant or repellent will be given an opportunity for rebuttal or a closing statement. Board members may ask questions of anyone offering testimony or statements at any time. All testimony and statements will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, we ask that you limit your testimony or your statement to your own personal knowledge. When you testify or make a statement, please tell us your name and address, and be sure that your name is printed on the sign-up sheet at the entrance. Because we do not have a court reporter, it's imperative that you speak out of microphones so that your testimony or statement will be recorded. We are audio and video recorded in this space and subject to broadcast. When all the testimony, other evidence, and statements have been received, we will close the record and begin our deliberations. We usually try to adjourn around 10:30 or so and not take our last case after 10:00. Hopefully, that won't be an issue this evening. And with that, we will go into our agenda, and we have draft minutes from our last meeting. We have meeting minutes for May 21st, 2013. Are there any comments or corrections? Seeing none, is there a motion regarding approval of those minutes?
I move that we approve our minutes for the meeting on May 21st, 2013, as drafted.
I second the motion.
Motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 The motion is carried, and I'll note, Member Gallimore was not present at that meeting, which leads me into the next item, which is that we have... Oh, there was a note about that. On Grant. Melissa? On Grant, we're trying to... Sorry, on Grant, there is a request for continuance.
That is correct. The case for 1108 Grant Street, the applicant has not yet attended the Site Plan and Appearance Review Committee meeting, so that case needs to be continued to the June 18th zoning board hearing.
Is there any discussion? If not, is there a motion?
I move in the matter 13ZMJV0044 for 1108 Grant Street. That we continue that until our regularly scheduled meeting of June 18th, 2013, here in council chambers at 7:30.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 The motion is carried. 1108 Grant Street will be continued. And then going back to our unfinished business, as I know Mr. Gallimore was not at our last meeting, are you able to confirm that you have reviewed the testimony and are able to participate regarding that matter?
I have reviewed it, yes.
Thank you. Okay, so when we last left off, I believe we had made our way substantially through a public comment regarding that case, but I would like to start off by continuing, seeing if there was anyone else who did not get to speak to us, who would like to speak to us with the, this evening regarding 2112 Ewing Avenue. Okay, yep. And actually, at this time, if there's anyone who wants to speak to us regarding this case, who I did not swear in at our last meeting, if you could, if I could swear you in at this time. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. And again, if we could have your name and address before you begin.
My name is Christine Martin, and I live at 2726 Payne Street. Thank you. I've known Catherine Wood, and Maggie, and Hannah Bambic for about 10 years. I first became acquainted with Maggie Bambic. When she was a kindergartner, she was my son Connor's kindergarten buddy at Lincolnwood School. For any of you who have or have had children at Lincolnwood School, Kindergarten Buddies is a really neat program that pairs a fifth grader with a kindergartner. They are buddies for the entire school year. In essence, the program emphasizes looking out for one another. The experienced, well-connected fifth graders who know a lot about how things work around there are encouraged to assist the youngsters who are newer and less experienced than they are. It's a wonderful opportunity for kids to learn the way the world should work, how the kindness of people in an advantaged position can lend a hand to those who need it. It's kind of nice. Years after Connor had been Maggie's buddy, and he was in middle school, Maggie asked him if he'd go get ice cream with her at Hardigans because she was going through a tough time and still needed her buddy. They went, and he helped. I visited Lincolnwood School's website today. I was so pleased to read the Lincolnwood PTA homepage that says, "The Lincolnwood PTA's main objective is to improve the education, educational environment for all children." There's a letter from the PTA presidents, one of whom is Abby Prujan. I'm sorry, Prujan. It says, "Dear Lincolnwood families, our aim is to continue to build a school community where every child is truly a superstar, entitled to explore and grow in the most welcoming, enriching, learning environment possible. I've lived in Evanston for 22 years now. That's the longest I've ever lived anywhere, and there's a reason I've stayed. It's Evanston. It's different than the rest. It's a place where we hold dear the values of community that include looking out for one another. These values are why we have Neighborhood Watch. It's why we have block parties. It's why we go to Central Street on July 4th and watch the parade. Looking out for one another is part of being a member of a community. I've experienced divorce, and I've raised my two children here. During the divorce, there was vitriol and harmful words. It was painful and drawn out. Divorce is an awful process no one plans to go through when they marry. It can knock the most together person off their feet. I got through and eventually remarried. Then, in an unforeseen turn of events, seven years later, I was diagnosed with battled and beat bilateral stage-three breast cancer. I couldn't work for a few years, and financially, times were very, very tough. I needed everyone on my side. Given support and understanding from my neighbors and community, as well as many casseroles, five years later, I'm well and back at work in my community at Evanston Hospital. What does all this have to do with anything? I recently became aware of this neighborhood conflict regarding the requested zoning variance. I must admit, I found myself without words. I understand disagreements. I understand that not everybody gets along or sees eye to eye on some things. Here's the thing that's throwing me for a loop, that any of the parties at 2112 Ewing Avenue could be accused of withholding facts for personal gain and reward, achieving financial gain by renting a coach house, lowering property values in the neighborhood, penalizing the neighborhood is really a stretch. The people at 2112 Ewing Avenue are trying to survive and live a content life. We don't all have to like each other, or like what another person stands for. We do owe it to one another to be respectful. At the root of this entire disagreement is a family that's been through the wringer. There are these two young ladies, Hannah and Maggie, that will learn from all of us what it means to be a community, to be a neighbor, and how to treat one another. By and large, we are a group of professional people. We're doctors, we're psychologists, business people, lawyers, therapists, community and school leaders. People rely on us in our roles at work to make good decisions and treat them with care. We should do no less at home with our neighbors. Thank you.
And did you want to speak for this?
My name is Doris Brown. I live at 2741 Simpson Ewing, where we've lived for 37 years. The thing that I've, I've raised a number of questions in memos to you as the zoning board, and what I'd like to know is if we will get answers to those questions. Some of them are, first of all, what is the definition of family necessity? Secondly, does someone have to show, in this case, the 2112 Ewing LLC, which is a sole member, is the Courtney Robinson Wood Trust? Does that have to show financial necessity? All of this discussion, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I read the minutes, all the discussion is about a tenant, just as this last statement was. And I don't see, this is actually a business issue, so are we going to get those kind of answers from the zoning board before this decision is made? Because they do have great precedence for Evanston and for what happens with the rest of Evanston. The other thing that I've asked and haven't gotten any response to is the staff recommendation that says, in Mr. Moran's first document, let me read it here, "A family necessity variation for 2112 Ewing conditional unless expiration six months after the date when the two children residing in the family home at 2112 Ewing, etc." So there I have a question also. Is there a definition in Evanston of family home? So that, my question is based on this. We lived at 2741 when the original 2001 variation went through, and we were concerned then when we saw the structure that was built, that we would be seeing this at some date. It's just taken 12 years to, to happen. What I'd like to know is how do you define family home? Is that the principal dwelling, or is that the converted garage? So that it doesn't take a lot of stretch to see that at some point, somebody else in the future could be standing here saying, "Now, that's, that whole rental is continuing." I'd like to know what family home means. I'd like to see, I'd like to know, and I wrote this in my document to you, are the two children residing in the family home at 2112 Ewing going to be named so that at some point in the future, there won't be another two additional tenants? This is, as I said, a business matter, and it's a rental situation, so I'd like to have answers to that. Then also, does the condition which the staff is recommending expire if the tenant family moves from the principal dwelling, or if the tenants' assumed financial difficulties are improved? If the tenant family home becomes a converted garage, and that principal dwelling then becomes the rented to another family with two children, does this condition continue, or does it expire? Does the time, does the time limit condition mean that the family home, putting that in quotes, cannot be torn down and replaced by a two-flat or a larger rental unit once the property is multi-use? That's our overall concern. Our concern is this is, one of our primary investments is the house we've lived in for 37 years, and we view it as a business issue, and we think that we would like to see the zoning board view it as such also, rather than the emotional tugs of what we recognize are difficult situations for the existing tenant of the principal dwelling.
Well, let me, I'm gonna try to, there was a lot there, so I'm gonna try to hit a lot of it, and then if I miss, you can kind of swing me back around. We, of course, our minutes are by very nature of themselves somewhat vague, and there's certainly a, a video that, that you could work with staff to, to watch that would sort of help you out a little bit, and if you wanted some more information later as to what happened last time. But in general, I would advise, I would say that we did talk about, for starters, there are standards for family necessity, similar to the fact that there are standards for a normal, major variation that we, that we consider. So those, that was, that was discussed in terms of our last meeting, in terms of what those standards are, and we didn't really get into discussion about whether or not it met that standard. We haven't really met, kind of hit that aspect of the discussion yet, but we, we did sort of touch on those things. There were also several questions, I believe Scott had several questions with respect to the LLC and how that worked, and we, I think we spent a fair amount of time as well understanding how that worked, what the parties were, and things like that. So there has been a fair amount of time put into, already started to be put into understanding those issues, and certainly not any decisions about how they impact, you know, how, what those influences are yet, but there's already been considerable attention to, to those items. With respect to tear down and rebuilding of something else that is above the standard for the, above the standard for the district, that is not an automatic option, tearing down, that would be a completely separate issue, completely separate, you know, if somebody wanted to build something that wasn't just a, you know, per the required zoning ordinance, those sorts of things are, would, are completely separate.
I, can I just, I understand that all.
Okay.
My question, I, I'm familiar with everything you just said.
Okay.
My question is, this is a condition that is put in order to, based on a family necessity, and my, and it's also...
But it's all...
Family home. These are terms that are...
These are, but those are, first of all, very, first of all, it's a recommendation. It's also not done, the recommendation is not written in terms of the, any of the technical aspects that we may look to condition upon that. This is not a technical recommendation. This is a broad-based description of a recommendation. It's not necessarily a technical recommendation of what that condition should say.
So the 2001 was a technical recommendation, then the final recommendation that is being proposed, that be overruled, or moved aside, or whatever?
2001 was not a recommendation at all. It was a...
Condition.
Condition.
Right, and this would also be a condition?
Well, not necessarily in this literal wording, though. It's just a general recommendation for a type of condition, but the literal writing and the literal, like, the actual conditions, I don't even know if we're gonna get to this, but, but in the hypothetical world that there is such a condition out there, it probably doesn't look like anything like this.
And my question also is, does Evanston do conditions like this, even proposed conditions for a tenant rather than for the owner? And I don't understand, I've never understood from the beginning, why we're not talking about the owner in all of this rather than a tenant. This is, Evanston has a lot of tenants now, so...
Well, it's an unusual, I think the, I think my understanding is that staff's interpretation was that the, was that it was really about the family as, the family as a whole, the two sisters, and not just, and not just the one sister that has, I guess, technical, you know, technical ownership at this point...
It's the trust of the sister.
Because of the financial issue, but, but that it was kind of a global family issue.
So then my question is in Mr. Moran's document, where he, on the last page, page four, where he puts the rental and the monthly loss of $720. If we're not looking at the owner's whole financial position, that would be the, ultimately, the 2112 Ewing LLC, sole member Courtney Robinson Wood Trust. If we're not looking at that, how do we determine that there's monthly loss? Do we know, have we seen, has the board seen? Do we, as citizens, see the full financial picture of this? Because to say, that's in our first document that my husband and I wrote, we all have carrying costs, we all have increased costs, we all have financial difficulties, whether we're retired, or, or many people in Evanston do, maybe not everybody, but many people do. So to start this, that a tenant is having difficulties, and we don't really get the full picture of the financial situation, doesn't seem like, it doesn't seem like it's what a city should be doing, quite honestly.
We haven't gotten there. I know that there was some discussion and debate about, you know, whether, whether that was, I know there was discussion about whether that, that should be applicable to this scenario. I think partially to your point, which is out of the scope of this meeting, but something that I think is worth discussion is the applicability of this standard, of this standard as a whole in general across the entire city.
Yes.
And I think a lot of what you're getting to is, is that issue. And I, and I agree, it's, it's, it's something that needs to be, you know, discussed, whether this should be a standard for us to be considering at all.
Thank you. I would really like to see you approach it, not emotionally, but fiscally, because for the neighbors, it is also a fiscal issue, and a very serious one. Thank you.
Did you want to speak? Yeah, please. Hi, I'm gonna have to swear you in.
Okay.
Yeah, you can come. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and your full name and address, please.
My name is Susannah Marie Johnston. I live at 2915 Simpson. We have not submitted any statement at this point. Okay. I, I'm sorry, I have an elevated heart rate. I've just biked over because I am currently living with my parents at age 30, so financials and what we all go through is something, phew, that I think we all deal with personally. So, so I'm, my mom right now is home sick, so I would like to first start with the facts of our situation. In my situation, my situation is that I moved here when I was 14 to Evanston. I lived with my parents at this address, 2915 Simpson, until I moved to Chicago to go to school. I have, so I grew up here. I went to Evanston Township. I moved from Skokie when I was 14. I knew no one but the people that I went to church with. I've observed the family in their day-to-day living, and I find the young children to be very intelligent as an educator, and I think that they contribute positively to the community. So our family situation, I, I see a lot of talk about definitions, and I don't think that that's what we're discussing right now. Our situation is that we rented our basement out from 2007 to 2009, and it was a very difficult situation for us. They didn't make much money. In 2007, we reported $1,000 income that we made off of that. 2008, we made $1,600. 2009, we made $513. So that is our situation. My mom wanted me to say that I am allowed to report the facts of what happened, and that we did it out of necessity. I think I probably told my parents it might be a good idea. I didn't realize how little they made off of it. Every year, they had to fill out a form that said whether or not they were renting. They decided in 2009 that it wasn't worth it to continue doing so, and so they stopped. so they stopped. I apologize for being late. I know that I haven't, we haven't reported anything yet, and so I would like to state, our family situation and my feeling is that it should be allowed to be rented out to earn extra income, that these children should not be moved from their situations. As an educator, I know that that can be very difficult on a young child. Whether or not they continue going to the same schools, they will still be in a new neighborhood, and I enjoy having them as my neighbors. I'm interested in renting the property. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else who wished to speak to us regarding 2112 Ewing Avenue?
Can I just ask a question?
Sure, I need to get you out of the mic, though, to do so.
Hi, and I apologize if I missed this at the first meeting, and you can stop me in my tracks if I did, but I'm unaware of what the fiscal danger is to our neighborhood. The financial fiscal danger.
Well, I guess it's up to interpretation, but there's some people who interpret, who interpret accessory uses like this as not being good for their, for their property values.
Is there evidence of that?
I don't think we're the determining body for any of that, Lauren, so I think, you know, we would have to get in real estate.
No, I'm just, I'm not even, I'm not even opining myself.
Yeah, no, no, no.
I'm just saying that, I'm just regurgitating sort of some of the opinions of others that have been expressed as to why that might be of concern to them. They're concerned about their property values.
I see.
So that's the financial, that's the financial impact that is being discussed.
Thank you for clarifying that.
The effect of a variation on property values is one of the factors that we're meant, we as a board are meant to consider. And that's why people express opinions one way or the other about the effect of a variation, the effect a variation may have on property values.
And often that is opinion, basically. Occasionally, we have Realtors, but often it's just opinion, and one could even argue from Realtors, it's opinion, because we get two Realtors in here on the same case, and they say opposite things. So, it's all a matter of weighing it and trying to find the facts. All right, if there's nobody else from the public who would like to comment to us on this case at this time, I'm gonna ask if you guys had any other comments or questions for staff, or the applicant, or anything before?
I actually, I'd appreciate it if staff could clarify, or at least explain on the record, what their opinion is in the new memo that was included in the materials, just so we can understand that for consideration. I guess my main question in reading it was, is it the opinion of city staff that it is an allowable use of a coach, putting aside the issue of the condition that was placed on the variation, is it the opinion of staff that it's allowable in Evanston to rent a coach house that's built in an R1 district?
Yes, that is correct. Yes, and that's my understanding, and I think that that factors in, and that's certainly part of, there were lots of questions at our last meeting about what specifically the definition of the coach house was, et cetera, so Melissa kindly pulled a bunch of this out for us, so that we didn't have to search for it. But that does seem to boil down to basically the only, the aspect that makes it not legal on this site is only a matter of the condition that was put on the variance. Anything else for the staff or the applicant at this time? We always offer the applicant an opportunity to sort of close or rebut public comment, or have the last word in whichever manner you wish.
I, I made a statement when I was here last time, and I don't want to repeat myself and take up your time and the rest of the other people's time here. I do believe that, I would just put out there that I do think that Evanston is a community that takes a progressive outlook towards things, and sometimes that's not always woven into some more technical aspects of zoning. But when the city adopted this particular section regarding family necessity, it obviously opened some real questions, and people are trying to get their arms around the notion of family necessity. But as I suggested before, and what I would close with again, is that I think this is almost a quintessential example of a family necessity, where we have two young ladies living with their mother, who have gone through difficult circumstances over the course of the last couple of years. There is a desire within the family to give support to a stable relationship with the community, with the schools, with their friends, with the rest of their family, with the neighbors who've come here and given their testimony to you, that this is a quintessential example of a family necessity, and I would respectfully request that the board would vote in favor of this application for such a variance. Thank you.
Okay, with that, if there's no other questions?
I, I don't have a question, because the memo answered my main question. I have a comment that, I don't know, would it be better for me to present it now, while there's still opportunity for
If you think it will elicit discussion outside the board, then I would
It's possible that it could.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so I think one of the really important aspects of this case is the fact that those that are opposed to granting the family necessity variance are rightly so concerned about their property values. So, I was also concerned, because, you know, I share your concern, and so I, in the last two weeks, have done some research and some investigation on that. And let me just disclose right now that I am an urban planner by education and by some actual professional experience. I spoke at length with David Morley, he's a senior research associate at the American Planning Association, located here in Chicago, and what I found was that the data are sparse on whether ADUs, which are accessory dwelling units, that's what we're talking about here, whether or not ADUs provide extra value to a property or detract from the value. There was a study in the Appraisers Journal, it's a trade journal for real estate appraisers, last fall, where they examined, I believe, 14 situations in Portland, Oregon, to try to answer that question. And they found that if they used, depending on the type of appraisal that was used, it either did not affect the value, or increased the actual value of the properties that had ADUs on them by anywhere from 5% to 10%. So, that's a little bit of hard, hard data. As I said, there is, there are very few ADUs around to study, and people haven't really been asking those questions and looking at it that, that much. But the one bit of research that Mr. Morley could point me to tended to show that it really wasn't a negative impact on the neighborhood. Now, one of the reasons that ADUs are recommended, I see you shaking your hand, shaking your head, I'm, I'm sorry you don't agree with what I found, that's, that's your right. One of the reasons that ADUs are something that have become used in residential zoning situations is because they do not, if they are properly implemented and planned for, they do not alter the physical character of the neighborhoods. I might add that in this particular situation, the, the massing and the character of the property at 2112 is, is really not anything that looks in any way, shape, or form like a multi-use building. It looks like a house with an outbuilding, and I will point everyone to the fact that there are many, many, many other similar buildings in the neighborhood. And I would even add that the house on the corner, I, what was the address? 2800 looks a lot more like an apartment building than 2112. It's a very massive structure. And then, finally, I would note, this is anecdotal, but in the last two weeks, I receive emails from Redfin, it's a, a real estate website. In the last two weeks, I have noted that there have been two houses that have come on the market in Evanston, and in both cases, part of the selling point for the properties were that they had, in fact, rentable coach houses on the lot, and
It's not rentable, it's never been rentable. They've been illegally renting, renting it out for 18 months.
And that's what we're here to, we're here to ascertain if going forward, that it's gonna be all right.
We're, hey, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but
I told you it would probably, it's some discussion.
I, I know, but
I'm addressing the issue of property value.
She has the right to talk, and
No, you don't.
And I didn't say that.
You can come and ask me any questions that you want.
In fact, the reason I did not close the record was so that there could be discussion. But one person has to speak at a time, and everybody has to be at a microphone. So, I specifically did not close the record, because she said that she was going to talk about something that might cause debate. Because once I closed the record, it's only us talking up here. So, I'm gonna let her finish, and then we can have discussion. Please.
So, in conclusion, I just want to say that my personal opinion, that is somewhat backed up by research that I have conducted in the last two weeks, is that granting a family necessity variance for this coach house ADU is not going to negatively impact anyone's property values in the neighborhood, and therefore, that is not a substantive, substantive reason for opposition. Thank you.
Can I just, sorry, I just wanted to respond quickly, Beth, because I also conducted some research of my own, because I, I also felt strongly, I spent more time in the days following the last hearing, thinking about this case than I do most of the time, and conducted quite a bit of research myself. First of all, and I, I appreciate that you felt the same way and did the same thing, I'm not sure that it's a relevant data point, the effect that an accessory dwelling unit has on the value of the property at issue. The question, I think, is the effect that having it has on the surrounding properties. And I'm not sure if your research covered that point, it may have. I know in my, in looking myself, the only thing on point that I could find was a 2004 study by somebody named R.E. Lang, in a paper called Valuing the Suburbs: Why Some Improvements Lower Home Prices. And in that study of predominantly suburban, single-family houses located in low-density neighborhoods in Philadelphia, they did find that the average property value of houses with secondary units was 5% lower than the value of similar properties without. Again, I'm not sure if that speaks to the surrounding neighborhoods, but I think that there's data on both sides of it, and I, and I'm not sure, so, I'm not, I'm not in a position to make an opinion based on the research I've seen and what you've described, what the effect of this, in, this use of a rental on a single-family residential one property in Evanston will have.
Let me just respond quickly to that, and then I think we can open it up to others that want to speak. I saw that study, too. Lang's paper dealt with lower-income neighborhoods in Philadelphia. The other things that I researched, and I didn't mention this just before, but there's currently 1,000 municipalities in this country that legally permit ADUs. Of those, you could say that, I didn't go through and do the count, but a large number of them were locations of a average high-income. For example, a quick short list, San Diego, Santa Cruz, San Francisco, Seattle, Boulder, Colorado, Aspen, Colorado, Honolulu, Hawaii. So, as you can see, ADUs are very much a part of some very, very high-average property-value locations. As a matter of fact, in Aspen, if you tear down an existing property and then want to rebuild on that property, for every 3,000 square feet, over 6,000 square feet, your new home becomes, you have to build accessory and accessory dwelling unit that will house at least one person. So, again, this is anecdotal, but, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of anecdotal evidence out there that ADUs exist very successfully in extremely high-property-value municipalities, so.
Since this has become a focus of this part of the discussion, I just would throw out, more from a historical standpoint than anything, there's actually, there actually are a lot of coach houses in Evanston that are rented. Maybe not so much in, in the, not, maybe not as much in the northwest portion of Evanston, but in a lot of the older areas of Evanston, there actually are a lot of coach houses that are rented, particularly as you get into larger homes along the lake. There are a lot of coach houses there that are rented by widowers, divorcees, et cetera, especially. We've actually had several cases in which those types of scenarios have, have been involved. So, that's kind of just some general information, as well as historically, there were a lot of, there were a lot of rentals and of coach houses. It was a way for people to sort of gain additional income, and historically, it, it was a sort of built-in affordable housing, where people of slightly different levels, slightly different levels of income could, could kind of be intermixed within a community, instead of it being sort of segregated populations. Of course, back then, they didn't think of it that way, and they didn't term it that way. It was just something they'd always done, but, but that's sort of something that, that we come out of, and certainly one of the reasons that it's still on the books in Evanston. With that, if there was anyone who wished to provide further comment at this time, I would, I would open that up for a little bit.
Just to clarify, having a lot of experience in Lincoln Park, and also knowing the area that you're talking about in Evanston, those coaches were designed for a different class of people called servants, and those were historically built as dwellings for the people who worked for the people in that. This converted garage that we're talking about, we were told was to be for storage. The original condition, which I kept from 2001, because at the time, when I saw it be built 2001, because at the time, when I saw it be built, I thought, they're making that into a rental unit. And as I said earlier, 12 years later, voila, here we are, a rental unit. Ostensibly, no one knew about it, except those of us in the neighborhood who lived there. And I understand that the present manager of the Courtney Robinson Wood Trust, who's the owner of the LLC, was told about it by one of the neighbors. So, anyway. I think that what we're saying here is, the example you're using, I wish we'd all lived in Aspen and could rent out our garages if we wanted. What we're talking about is an area that historically does not have coach houses. There may be buildings that look like one, the one that someone cited, that I think is what used to be a boarding house, that was made into a single-family probably 25 years ago, that large, that large house. What we're talking about is a converted garage illegally rented now. All the neighbors knew it wasn't supposed to be rented. No one could find that this was, you know, all they had to do was go to a neighbor and ask for this original 2001. If the city doesn't have this, we all did. And I just don't understand how this has gotten this far without looking at what was originally done, and now here we are, saying that a converted garage is a coach house that mirrors those on the lake. It doesn't. And you can't twist it to say that it does.
And I, I think everybody, I think everybody, just to clarify, I think everybody has seen and is fully aware of the, of the previous condition that was, was put in place. And I think that we are, we have lots of varying opinions about how, how that was handled back then, and whether. Yes. Well. I mean, we have seen, she was arguing that, or stating that she thought we hadn't seen the document, that we didn't know what the standards are.
Of the variance, it was like seven things, five of them they didn't comply by. Did you go down the list of seven?
Yes. All right.
My name is Peter Steinhaus. I live right next door to him at 2108 Ewing.
Can I start you in?
Sure.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, what I'm saying is, the original variance had seven things that you were supposed to comply by. Five of them, they didn't even comply by. There's no certificate of occupancy, there's no final inspection done. And now we're spending all this time going through this stuff that we've been trying to get the city to deal with for years. We've been in the office.
And I can't argue with you on that. I, I can't.
Who do I argue with?
I mean, unfortunately, I, I, I feel you, I, I.
We, we actually got the response one time saying, one time saying, do you have a copy of their lease? We're their neighbor, because we said there's illegal renters.
I can't say that I don't agree.
But how do we get to this point?
I can't say that I don't agree with you. And unfortunately, I mentioned, as I mentioned a little bit last time.
Should we go to city council and ask what, what his role is in managing his staff to make sure that they're, if this was a food service institution, they would be closed down, correct?
Basically, basically, I mean, it's hard, first of all.
If this was a construction site, they would be closed down.
Okay, hold on, hold on.
Lori, I think we should maybe close for debate internally. I think we've heard some really good arguments.
I just want to, I'm just going to clarify, I'm just going to clarify, as I mentioned before, I think last time, unfortunately, our board has no control over enforcement. We don't, we don't, we don't over.
Well, can you make a recommendation to enforce?
I can be upset, I understand that, but we have no control over enforcement. We don't even, this board literally does not even make the zoning ordinance. We don't do that. That's not in our purview. So I really encourage you to talk to your alderman.
Sure.
Go to the city council, and.
I've never met him, but he's supporting this without talking to us.
Those are the people that need to hear your, your opinions on this. Unfortunately, we, I can hear you.
We have. We have talked to Mark Tenenbaum.
I don't know what else, I don't know what else to do, but there's no, we have, we have no recourse. I'm really sorry, but we have no recourse.
I swore in last time.
Yes.
But you're talking about something so, so important without.
We have no recourse over previous, over, over how accurate or in, you know, we have no, we have no recourse over enforcement or anything like that. We have, we have no power over that. All we are able to do is take the facts of an issue and decide on them. So that's what we're going to do. I'm sorry. Okay, you have.
Brad Knight, I live at 2109 Forest View. I live right behind the property, and I swore in last time, but.
Yes, you're still sworn in, sir.
Let me just have to, maybe make two points. From our perspective, though, the zoning office is the one who we've been communicating with. I emailed them over the last two years, and I meant to.
And again.
All right, so maybe it's not this board's job, but then.
And we have no purview over the zoning office as well.
Then can you tell me who, then, but every time we send an email, it just gets put in this application for this board. So from our perspective, it seemed like it was part of this.
Well, any application, any, any applications that are opinion about this case, then we will see them and can use them in part of our consideration. But if it's about enforcement, we have no ability to, if you're, if part of your email was about enforcement, then that's not in our purview. But any parts of your emails that were about opinion related to this case?
So my emails, the response that I got was not a response. It was that I'm going to put it into this packet for this board. That was the response that I got, so. That's fine. I think you made that point clear.
I think, yeah.
Let me just, I, I know the discussion's been focused on the family and on property values. I, I don't really think that the property value is my main driving force for being here right now. I think the two things that worry me the most are the privacy of my property and the security. And I tried to make those points last time. So, you know, this is a discussion that's beyond just property values, which somehow, I think, puts us in the light of being concerned about our property values more than other issues. So I think it's a bigger picture, and I think the, the main question that was raised is that there was conditions placed on this variance, which we've not seen enforced. So we're, I think, concerned about the lack of enforcement from the variance from the beginning.
Okay, thank you. All right. With that, we are going to close the record and begin our deliberations. Clara, did you have anything?
Sure. I mean, I think, I forget, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, the lady who spoke very eloquently. I agree, we're, we're being asked to make a decision based on the financials of the tenant and not of the owner. And it's, if any other landlord came to us and say, hey, I can't make my mortgage on this building I own, we wouldn't be granting a special exception to the, the zoning to their property. The fact is, this property was, was given this variance to allow a garage to have an extra space, already beyond what is allowed in that area. So now they're asking for an additional exception to it, and treating it similar to a grand coach house from the east side along the lakefront. So I also agree with that point. So what I want to come back to, though, is this family necessity variance. Mr. Moran, I can't remember where you landed on it last time, exactly, but the, yeah, which didn't seem to quite fit within the, the allowable exceptions or allowable terms of that, of that necessity, of that variance. It seemed to fall sort of in between.
I've been thinking about that too, so I definitely want to comment when you're done.
It seems to me that family necessity variance applied to some sort of catastrophic impairment. I'm not saying financial need is not catastrophic. Absolutely, it's a burden for many of us. However, my understanding of that variance was intended if you needed a ramp, there was something going on that needed to be, your property needed to be modified. But it was not a financial situation driving the changing in zoning. So indeed, it is, it's a sad situation for the family, but we're talking about an owner and, and the property they own, and the needed zoning for that property. That's really what we're talking about. And yes, we're peppering it with this sympathetic story, but that's really not what we're here to decide on.
To the family necessity, that, that third condition, with all due respect to Mr. Moran, I believe he actually hung his hat on the wrong clause of that sentence. I believe the first clause was growing family, which to me, I interpret that as you need, you're having more kids than you originally thought you would, so you need to put an addition on the back of your house. I felt that actually this situation is more accurately described by the second clause, and I'm sorry, I did not, I was searching for it.
We don't have it in this package.
I know, it says something about.
Why don't we stop for two seconds and see if we can.
I was going to say, I have it right here.
Right, read it, please.
The three.
The three are modify a residence to meet the special living needs of the disabled. Number two, modify a residence to provide space for an elderly parent to live with the family of his or her child. Number three, modify a residence to accommodate a growing family or to alleviate an inconvenience.
Exactly. Alleviate an inconvenience. I interpret that to be an extremely dry rendition of what is going on right now in this family's life.
But we're talking about a property owner.
We're talking about the property owner who is the sister of the tenant and who took out a loan to keep her sister in her house. I understand that absolutely technically, on some sort of very, very strict level, that the owner isn't the tenant, and so maybe we don't care about the family necessity variance. But I think, for me anyway, it's perfectly understandable that the tenant, in this case, has a huge role to play as a de facto owner. She was the previous owner. You know, God willing, all the finances work out. In the end, maybe she'll be the owner again. So.
However, don't you find it interesting that there's been some, that they haven't necessarily been totally forthright in how they've used that variance, how they use that.
I don't follow. Talk about that some more.
Well, they were told not to rent it, and clearly they have been. The, their neighbors are frustrated. I can empathize with that frustration. They've been trying to follow the rules, the same rules that apply to everybody else.
Right. So, so we've got a situation where a lot of anger and frustration has built up, and I think we've also, we could also look at this as we've got a situation where we could move forward and we can legitimize the situation in a way that fits with the ordinances of Evanston and provides a solution for this family, who I do believe is invalid contention for this family necessity variance. I absolutely think that, you know, any kind of regulations that need to be met, I think they should meet them. Certificate of Occupancy, any kind of inspections, any kind of registrations, any of that, I would think that would all need to be met. And then further, this is totally out of what you were just talking about, but even though I think the memo from, from the city was pretty clear that you can have coach houses, I think that we should definitely entertain the sunset clause for this one. So then, so then what we're saying is not even going to be a binding situation on this property moving forward. If we, if we enact this sunset clause that the applicant has proposed, you know, I think we can even feel a little bit better about the situation, so.
For, for me, unless someone else wants to speak up first, there are two things that I, the way I am leaning on this are swayed by. The first is the variation that was granted in order to build this was conditioned, and it was very specifically conditioned. It was conditioned that expressly, that the coach house may not be occupied by persons who are not members of the family occupying the principal dwelling. That was a condition imposed on granting this variation. If that condition hadn't been placed, the variation wouldn't have been granted. The second condition, which to me is important for where we are today, is that the owners of the property, which by the way are the same people that are stating a family necessity, the people that want to stay in the house, the owners were supposed to record that condition with the city, so that it would be cleared to a buyer, that there was a condition on the property, they couldn't use the accessory, the accessory unit as a rental, to, as a rental or as a rental to someone who wasn't a member of that family. Now, I think it's also notable that the LLC that purchased the property and that claims to have been unaware of this condition is the sister of the owner of the property. I don't think you can plead ignorance of that fact when the family that you are trying to bail out of a financial problem is your, is your family. So I don't, I don't put much weight in the testimony that the LLC was unaware of the condition. So now the question is, does the owner, this LLC, which is renting the property, in my view, does the owner have a family necessity? Now, if the owner of the property was completely unrelated to the people they were renting it out to, we probably wouldn't be having the discussion. Right? It's a landlord-tenant situation. In this case, it seems to me, the owner of the property doesn't have a growing family. The owner of the property is not experiencing an inconvenience, as I, as I interpret that provision in the family necessity clause. I don't think that it exists as financial insurance to Evanston homeowners, that if they are unable to make their mortgage payments, that they qualify for some variation from the Evanston zoning ordinance. So in my view, the fact that the only reason the coach house exists is because of a condition that was placed on it, which is the whole reason why we're here, and the fact that the, the, the current owner of the property either was aware or should have been aware of that condition, while unfortunate, you know, to me, means we shouldn't grant the variation. I don't think that the conditions for a family necessity are met.
I'm sorry, sir. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That's his opinion. That's his opinion, though, at this point.
So one of the previous owners is completely out of the picture, and we can't read minds on what happened with that family. I often, I often think about Bernie Madoff's wife. I can actually believe that she really didn't know what was going on. I think it's entirely possible that she didn't. And the reason I'm even bringing that up, because it seems completely off-topic, is that we don't know what went on in that family before. It sounds like things got very ugly and very difficult, and I certainly don't want to, you know, put them through us discussing that any more than we need to. But we don't really know what the sister knew. Perhaps we should have, you know, questioned them more closely on it, but I'm gonna, I'm accepting the testimony that I heard for what it was. And so I, I'm okay with the fact that mistakes have been made, and now that they need to be rectified, but I think there's a way forward here that, and further to that, apparently it's okay to have a coach house in Evanston. That's what I keep coming back to.
I agree with you, but this coach house wouldn't exist but for that condition. This coach house was conditioned on not renting the property out. So I agree with you, if staff is right, which I don't have an opinion on at the moment, that you can rent out a coach house in Evanston. And if we were facing that situation, we might not even be hearing the case. But what we're hearing is, should this variation, should, should this family necessity apply to a variation that was granted in 2001 that was expressly conditioned?
Right. I think, I think the situation, the way I see it, is that circumstances have absolutely changed in a drastic way, and that we can evolve, and that we can, conditions can be changed. I'm, I'm sorry, that's terrible, but you know, laws in Congress, they get repealed. People, things change. So, I, I understand what you're saying. I hear what you're saying.
The situation obviously has changed. I don't, and I don't.
So then the conditions can change.
And I'm not trying to diminish at all what, what the tenant of this property is, is going through or has gone through. I consider it to be a very serious situation, which is the reason I've given it a lot of my time, and you as well, right, all of us. Right? All of us, not just sitting here but outside of this room.
Absolutely.
So, but in my view, notwithstanding the change in this family circumstances, the zoning ordinance doesn't exist for us as a type of financial insurance for homeowners that are in trouble. When people can't afford the homes they're in, they have to sell them.
Actually, the whole.
When families can't afford the homes they're in, they have to move. They rent something that costs less, they buy a home that costs less, that's just what happens.
One of the whole reasons to have an accessory dwelling unit is to allow homeowners who get into trouble to stay in their homes.
But that's not what we have here. That it was conditioned not to be an accessory dwelling unit.
That's right, it was, but we can, that was a condition.
But I think that the one thing that would be very different is if they came to us before renting and said, "Our condition has changed, we would like to have this condition struck from the original ordinance." And, you know, here is the reason why, as opposed to, I mean personally, I think it was the last time we met, we had many, many illegal things that we are left trying to clean up after they come to light. And it, it puts us in a very difficult situation. It puts the owners of the property in a very difficult situation because we, we then are asked lots of times to speculate on who knew what, when, where, why, et cetera, which we don't always, because of the fact that we are not judges and don't have evidence law and stuff like that, makes it much more difficult. We sort of have to take people at their word for a lot of the stuff that they say to us.
Which we have the owner saying that she didn't know, she couldn't rent it out.
She said that there was no search, in the search of the city, there was nothing that said it couldn't be rented. And to me, that's a very different statement.
I'd also point out that the sister, who was the prior owner of the property, signed a warranty deed, which was in our packet, that stated that, that was supposed to contain a legal description subject to the covenants and conditions and restrictions of record. So, the sister who is now in the financial hardship, signed a document and was supposed to have disclosed to the owner, her sister, exactly the conditions that were on the property. So to me, pleading ignorance of the conditions is not at all a carrying factor here. I don't, I don't play, I personally, and I'm not suggesting you're wrong in thinking otherwise, but I personally place no significance on the testimony of the LLC that they were aware of the condition, unaware of the condition.
Since everyone else has kind of spoken, I'll take my turn here too. I went back and sort of reread the family necessity variation. And in looking at what it strives to do, it really allows this board to grant minor variations that are outlined in section 6383A, minor variations. These basically deal with yard setbacks, height, minimum setbacks, lot width, gross lot coverage, including impervious surface, dormer size, modification of residence to meet special needs of the disabled. The family necessity variation, in my opinion, is very much to be used in those situations in which you suddenly find out you're having triplets and you need to add onto your room, onto your house. The fact that your spouse is in an automobile accident and is now paraplegic and needs to be in a wheelchair and you must make those accommodations for that property. This really allows, it's really interesting because it's one of the few things that we actually can approve as a board without actually having to have a public hearing on. We only have to have a public hearing if there's opposition to it. If I'm correct. Just want to make sure before I stake my, my claim on that. And so I, and so I think this very much is a, a, not necessarily even a catastrophic thing. To me, the inconvenience is all of a sudden you have a family that has seven children living there, you have one bathroom. To me, that's an inconvenience that I would be willing to definitely say is something that should be met by this, even if they have to build up to the lot line on it. That's something that they could apply for a family necessity variation on. In my opinion, this, if this, if this case had come to us as a major variation in which it had been requested that, that this is the situation that's occurred, we would like to have permission to rent this, I think I would be standing very differently. In my opinion, they, they filed under the wrong variation. They've asked us to consider something that doesn't meet what is the situation here. And in, in terms of who knew what, when, you know, I can speculate on that, but, but it does no good because it's merely what I think happened. But I do think that in this particular case, the wrong variation has been applied for and therefore it's, it's not what, what should have been requested and it's not what should be granted.
You know, what I, what I kind of hang my hat on is, you know, if this were a coach house that wasn't built with these, with these variances in 2001, we'd all go home because of per staff, it's apparently legal to rent a coach house in Evanston. What I keep going back to is that they were specifically granted a variance based on the fact that they're not able to rent it and that was agreed to at the time. So, what I, what I struggle with is can we override a previously granted variance on something we specifically said they cannot do at the time? You know, you can make a case for statistics and everything else and, you know, tug at the heartstrings with the family, which, you know, hits me very hard, but what I keep going back to is, would we have approved this in 2001 as a coach house with a size variance? And we probably wouldn't have. So to me, it kind of hinges on the variance in 2001.
I think I, I agree with parts of, of, you know, a, a lot of what all of you said. And I guess one of the things that I'm gonna just mention before I get into more of my thoughts, as I, I do want to emphasize that I think that, I think that this board has put in more effort in, in consideration and research and trying to understand this case than I have probably seen for any other case that we have had to deal with. So I want to impress that upon, upon everybody here, that regardless of our consider, our final decision, it was certainly not made without undue consideration. So that's that. I think that coach houses are a vital aspect of sort of the future of, the future of housing in general. But that's in general. And then I look more specifically at this case. And I certainly empathize with the neighbors in consideration of, of how things, of how things have played out over the years. Frankly, I don't agree with the concept of allowing an enlarged structure and suddenly thinking that it will not be rented out. I think that's just not using any common sense. But it is what it is. It's a structure now that we all have. And I think that no matter what this board says, rental of that, of that structure will always be an issue. With that, I, I also have, have looked further at the family necessity variance and, and at, at the considerations of the family as well as the ownership issues. And I have to agree that I don't think that this case is currently meeting the standards for a family necessity variance. And I, and I also agree that, as you mentioned, I probably, if, if the, the very original variance were in front of me, I, I wouldn't have granted that either. So the, the condition comes off the board, but in this case, I, I think that regardless of what happened in the past, the structure was built and it was built with that condition and it was built with that understanding from both, at the time at least, both the owners and the neighborhood when it was originally constructed. And I see not enough compliance with the standards for the variation to overturn that decision that was made at that time. Any other discussion? So with that, there are five standards that we have in front of us with respect to family necessity variations. They're somewhat similar, although slightly different from the normal variation, standards that we would review for a major variation.
Lori? Sorry. We can discuss the standards, but actually, in, in my view, if we agree that the condition, the three, none of the three conditions for a family variation is met, then I don't know that we need to discuss the standards for whether to grant one.
We don't agree.
I mean, if a majority of us agree.
Oh, yeah.
Then I don't know that we need to discuss the sta, go through the five standards which presuppose that you agree that one of the three conditions to be discussing them is met.
Ken?
Kind of seems like I don't get my say if you do it that way.
Do you, what do you think?
Would it be a dual vote, one if any of the three?
Do you think that we?
Absolutely, I think the third condition was met. I think it's an inconvenience that, yeah, I don't know.
Do you think that Scott has an argument that? Or, or are we required to, are we, or are we required to run through the standards for the variation with potentially Scott's reasoning being why, for instance, Scott, just to throw it out there.
I understand your reasoning.
Under standard number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. You could say, "No, it is not because it does not meet one of these three things." So, just throwing that out there as an option, but.
For the record, Ken Cox from the City's Law Department. This is a new question for me. I've been to, as you know, I've been to a number of your meetings and I've seen many, many deliberations and this is the first time we've had sort of a threshold question of this nature. The best answer that I can come up with at the moment is that the variations, as you can see in the ordinance, are a, essentially a closed set of options that are available to property owners to, or in some cases tenants to apply for. If the application doesn't meet one of the defined variations, typically what happens is the zoning staff will essentially reject it out of hand and not even advance it to the board for its consideration. I mean, for ex, I'm trying to think of something, the major variations are the ones that most commonly, normally come to you, I should say. They're limited to yards and setbacks, height, lot size, lot coverage, off-street parking and loading, home occupations and townhouse orientation. So if, if someone were to apply for a major, major variation that didn't fall into one of those categories, it wouldn't even get in front of you. In this case, you've already listed the three types of family variations that are listed in the ordinance. Zoning staff reviewed them, felt that it didn't pass that threshold and that's why the case is in front of you tonight. So, I, I can't say definitively that, that Board Member Gingold's argument is without merit. I would just say that at this point, it might, it might be instructive or, you know, most, best advance the record if you were to go through the standards and, and see which ones apply in your, in your deliberations and in your opinion.
I think in consideration of any future action or potential future action, I'm gonna suggest that we run through the standards and list our concerns on that point as part of it.
Can I suggest that we also run through the three qualifications for a family necessity variation to be considered and vote on whether any of those three is met as a board?
I would recommend that maybe we do that as a subset of standard number two.
Fair enough.
Fair enough then. Okay. Then we will run through the FIE standards, as I mentioned previously. Standard number one, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment or property values of the adjoining properties. We've had a fair amount of discussion on this matter. I think that we may have to run down a call on this, but I do believe that this standard has, has been met. I do not believe it will be a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment or property values of the adjoining properties.
I also agree that it will not be, and it show any adverse effects on the use and enjoyment of the adjoining properties.
I vote, it's a, will have adverse effect.
Will.
I agree. Member Weinberg.
Okay.
I do not believe it would have a adverse effect.
Yeah.
I do not believe this applies to the family necessity variation request, so I will not vote on that one.
Okay. The requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. I believe that this is probably the kind of key aspect for most of us, both for the kind of larger intent in some cases of the fact that people don't believe that it meets any of the three standards, or, or to a lesser degree that it is not significant enough or, or aligning with what the intent of the family necessity variations, the types of inconveniences that the family necessity variation was intended to, to cover. And so with that, I would say that I do not believe this standard has been met.
I think I'm probably the only person that does meet, believe that standard, the standard to be met, so I'll go ahead and say that it does meet with the intent of the zoning ordinance because the zoning ordinance clearly provides for a family necessity variation and the third potential reason to get, to obtain a family necessation, family necessity variation is to part one for, to provide for a growing family and two, to alleviate an inconvenience. And as I stated before, I believe that that second clause to be particularly, a particularly dry, mundane way of describing what this particular family necessity is, and so I do believe that standard has been met.
So, as to the previous comment, as we consider this going forward, I was basically saying no to all three of those, so you're saying yes and, and based on, to the, to the three standards.
Oh, got it, yes.
That we are also considering as part of that, you're, you're saying yes to.
Obviously, the first two don't apply.
Yes to number two as a standard as a whole and also in respect to the three subcategories that.
Yes to number three, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Claire?
I, I agree with the chairman that none of the three conditions for a family necessity is met and therefore that this variation would not be in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. I also don't think it's within the intent of the zoning ordinance to use a family necessity variation to get relief from conditions placed on a prior variation.
I agree with Member Gingold.
You know, while, while I don't necessarily agree with financial need to be excluded, I think that the intent of the ordinance was to uphold the original variance, so I would agree with Member Gingold as well.
Let me just say it again.
What did you say?
I don't remember. I'll say something similar to it again. I don't believe that the family necessity variation and the relief that it provides is what should have been asked for here, therefore I will not be voting.
That's right. Oh, at all?
At all.
Period.
Period.
Oh, sorry, okay. And I will, I, I guess I missed that conclusion. And I will, I, I guess I missed that conclusion apart from the last time. Okay, so.
As in, at all, at all?
At all.
As in, at all, at all.
At all, at all, moving, okay. Um, the character of the residence, sorry, standard number three, the character of the residence for which the variation is requested will as a result, will be as or more consistent with the character of the residences of the surrounding neighborhood. There is no proposed change to the actual physical character of the property as a part of this, uh, request, um, and there hasn't been discussion about its inconsistency physically at this point, so I believe this standard has been met.
I agree.
I do not think the standard has been met because even though the physical layout may not change, the character will change.
I agree with Member Weinberg.
I agree with the chairman.
Okay. Standard number four, the purpose of the, yeah. Who did I miss? I missed somebody, okay. Standard number four, the purpose, no, I missed somebody else, I only have four. The purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. I don't believe that their request is based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income, uh, from the property. There's also, there is actually an aspect of trying to keep the family on the property in general, and the income is a manner of attaining that goal. So from that standpoint, I don't think it's, it's the only, I don't think it's the exclusive desire, so I believe that standard is met.
I think that standard is met because obviously there is income that's going to be derived if, if the coach house is allowed to continue to be rented, but we've heard testimony to the effect that, that income would be used to pay the mortgage, not to provide extra income, and, uh, more importantly than that, we very much can see that the intent, um, that was hoped for when applying for this variation was to keep this family in place and to continue or to create a sense of normalcy for them after they have gone through a very difficult experience. And, um, the sunset clause that was part of the application, um, can be used to prove that to me, so I believe that standard has been met.
I disagree that this standard is met. There, the application is specifically seeking only for relief to extract additional income from the property to be able to, additional meaning incremental to the income it's generating now, uh, to be able to pay all or part of the mortgage. So in my view, this standard is not met.
I agree the standard has not been met.
I would agree the standard has been met, only because, just my quick calculation of what the mortgage payment probably is, they probably could rent out both structures to one family for what that carrying cost would be, so I don't think that they have an ulterior motive of making this a profit, making venture.
Okay. Standard number five, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the relevant regulation among the feasible options identified before the zoning administrator, uh, issues his or her recommendation to the zoning board of appeals regarding said variation, which is a little bit of a weird way to word it since we're actually hearing the case, but these are somewhat more written for the zoning administrator. Needless to say, uh, essentially that's talking about, um, least deviation, minimum change necessary, which essentially, uh, which we normally hear. Certainly because of not, certainly because of not meeting the general standards of the zoning ordinance, it's not the least, um, the least deviation, uh, necessary. So from that standard, I believe this is not met.
I believe this standard has been met. The reason I believe that is because, for number one, they're not trying to change anything. I understand that it wasn't legal, et cetera, et cetera, but they're not trying to change anything that's currently going on. Secondly, I believe this standard has been met. Shoot, I just completely lost my train of thought there. Because. Right, because, yeah, I think they met the family necessity variation standard, so.
Standard has not been met.
I agree the standard has not been met.
I'm going to abstain on that one just because I don't see it as being, uh, you know, lesser or greater. I think it's just a choice of whether they can rent it or not, so I'll abstain on that one.
All right, well, had some interesting run through there. I believe that we've covered all of the basis of discussion, certainly with the lengthy deliberation to add to that. So with that, um, we need to move on to a motion, and who is, who's up?
I move in the matter thirteen ZM JV dash zero zero three eight with regard to the application of the owners of two one one two Ewing Avenue, that the zoning board of appeals deny the relief requested for the reasons stated on the record.
Motion has been made, and second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
I would ask that I be recorded as a present vote, please.
And with that, um, the motion is carried four to one, and, uh, that's our final decision. And, uh, with that, I'm going to take like a two-minute break here, um, to let everybody clear the room, and then we will quickly run into our next case.
Sorry about that, guys.
Paul just left to go to public, and he's going to Seattle. He's going to DC, and he's going to Northern California. Going pretty well.
We're hanging on.
Very exciting, super exciting.
Shall we?
Have you been to there on Thursday?
No, I'm not.
Have you been to there on Thursday?
No, I'm not.
Have you been to there on Thursday?
No, I'm not.
It's pretty tight.
Do you know, um, do you know the, do you know?
Yes.
The local, right, fucking, huh?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Here, let's just find out.
Yeah, I'm afraid that they.
Okay, I think we're ready here to head back onto the record and continue our agenda for this evening, noting that we previously continued eleven oh eight Grant Street, and that we are now moving on to the issue of twenty-three ten Main Street, which is new, so Melissa, if you could read that in?
Few Spirits LLC, La Cie, applies for a special use permit for a wholesale goods establishment at twenty-three ten Main Street. Twenty-three ten Main Street is located in the C one commercial district, which requires a special use permit for wholesale goods establishments to operate, zoning code section six ten two three. The zoning board of appeals makes a recommendation to city council, the determining body for this case. Documents included with this case are the special use application submitted May ninth, two thousand thirteen, standards form, zoning analysis, plat of survey dated December twenty-ninth, two thousand two, site plan, aerial view of property, zoning map, image of the property, and spark draft meeting minutes of May twenty-ninth, two thousand thirteen.
Okay, and, uh, if I could have whoever's going to speak to us regarding this case? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
And your name and address?
Todd Paul, and I'm at ten seventeen Sherman Avenue.
Okay, and why don't you walk us through?
Um, so we currently have a facility at nine eighteen Sherman. Um, that's where the production facility is. Um, we are bursting at the seams there, um, and literally, um, and we are looking to add additional storage capacity, um, hence the, uh, trying to procure a lease at twenty-three ten Main Street. This facility will be used for, uh, primarily storage of aged product, um, and, uh, additional bottling capacity for us.
And what sort of, uh, what sort of trips do you expect this location to generate, both back and forth from your other facility, as well as actually out, you know, headed back out for good?
The expectation is that, um, we will, we're going to do, we do about a hundred gallons a week, um, when we're, when we're kind of fully up and running. Um, and with that, uh, every Friday, we will take barrels from our production facility to our, um, to this location. Um, it'll be a mid-sized truck, just kind of doing, it'll, it'll, they'll do it all in one fell swoop, it's not a, that's not a, that's only a few barrels. Um, and as far as, um, deliveries generally, I mean, as far as the outbound, um, pickups, um, the expectation there is generally, that's, it's, it's very sporadic, I mean, it just, it's based on orders. Um, so like this week, we've had two pickups from our current location. Um, some weeks it's none, some weeks it's three, you know, they generally happen on Tuesdays. Um, so probably the average is probably two pickups, mid-sized truck, a pallet or two of, uh, case volume, so. Probably on the whole, on the average, a mid-sized truck will go in there three to four times a, a week. This was, this is a facility, this is a building basically designed for that. It has all back, uh, all bay door docks on the back of the facility. Currently, it's largely vacant.
So there's no staff at this facility, like, full-time, only when you're actually going there?
Yeah, at, at most, you're talk, I mean, even if we're, you know, at full capacity there, um, you know, this is, this will be a staff person working there, you know, an half, maybe one or two, um, couple afternoons a week. Um, we're gonna, there's going to be kind of two staff people responsible for this location. They're going to split time, primarily, uh, spending time at the nine eighteen location.
I'm trying to find a definition of wholesale goods at this moment, if somebody could.
Could I actually, I would, I'd recommend, this doesn't have to do with this case, but that if a special use is applied for, that we include the definition of the use in the packet materials.
The definition for wholesale goods establishment, a building, property, or activity, the use or purpose of which is the sale of goods, products, or merchandise in bulk quantities to retailers or persons who will in turn sell the goods, products, or merchandise directly to the consumer. Wholesale goods establishments shall not include any use or other type of establishment that is otherwise listed specifically in a zoning district as a permitted or, or a special use.
So in your, in the current facility at, um, on, uh?
Nine eighteen.
On nine eighteen, you sell to individuals, right?
Yes, we have a tasting room at that facility, so we do some retail sales with that location.
And you won't be conducting any of that individual sale activity at the wholesale goods facility?
No, it's a, um, it doesn't have a retail front. This location is only, you only enter exit through the main door and the, and the roll-up bay door.
Is it other people that come and pick up from you, or you will come and pick up some pallets and bring it to them?
Uh, they pick up from us.
Okay.
Distributors will, uh, I mean, it's not a hundred percent the case, but probably seventy-five percent, uh, of our distributors are required to, they, once it, they're responsible for it once it leaves our door, so they, they manage all the shipping and all that kind of stuff.
Okay.
And it's a hundred percent distributor, uh, interaction at that point, at this location.
And which routes do you, I mean, most of the people who are coming to buy your wholesale goods are coming from the highway, you're thinking?
Uh, it's probably hard to say. I mean, our, our largest distributor is, um, is our, is our Illinois distributor, and they come from the city, um, so I'm assuming they probably come, you know, from the other way, um, just because that's probably the most convenient location. Um, our international and, uh, other state distribution probably come from the highway. A lot of times what happens is they, uh, they short haul it to a, a, a more centralized location, a bonded warehouse, um, and there's one of those, um, just south of us in the city, so I mean, it's probably six in one, half a dozen the other, if I'm, just to make a guess.
From, from the picture provided in our packet, it looks like there are parking, there's a parking lot in front of the facility for, uh, passenger cars.
Uh, and in addition, which is kind of a little harder to see on the plat survey here, um, that whole, that whole, there's parking all down the side, um, where those bay door cut-ins look like on the drawing, there's parking all down that, you know, pull-in parking, and then at the end, there's parking at the end, uh, at the end, where's the turnaround?
Is, is the parking you're describing? Okay.
And it's 100% distributor, uh, interaction at that point, at this location.
And which routes do you, I mean, most of the people who are coming to buy your wholesale goods are coming from the highway, you're thinking?
Uh.
Is it kind of?
It's probably hard to say. I mean, our, our largest distributor is, is our, is our Illinois distributor, and they come from the city, so I'm assuming they probably come, you know, from the other way, just because that's probably the most convenient location. Our international and other state distribution probably come from the highway. A lot of times what happens is they, they short haul it to a, a more centralized location, a bonded warehouse, and there's one of those just south of us in the city, so I mean, it's probably six in one, half a dozen the other, if I'm, just to make a guess.
From, from the picture provided in our packet, it looks like there are parking, there's a parking lot in front of the facility for passenger cars?
Uh, in, in addition, which is kind of a little harder to see on the plot survey here, that whole, that whole, there's parking all down the side where those bay door cut-ins look like on the drawing, there's parking all down that, you know, pull-in parking, and then at the end, there's parking at the end, at the end, where's the turnaround?
Is, is the parking you're describing and the parking that I pointed out, is that all leased, included with the lease, or is that public parking?
No, it's, it's all property owner parking, or, you know, leasing parking.
And do, so do you anticipate that the number of leased parking spaces will be adequate to park in for your employees?
Yeah, more than adequate, yeah. You're talking a couple hours, two or three days a week. And I was over there today, and there's, you know, probably a third of them are only, are being occupied.
Question for staff. Do we have hours as a consideration, given use and location?
I would suggest that, given the location and the proximity to other, other light industrial uses that are slightly east, as well as many commercial uses that have extensive hours in the adjacent shopping center, hours of operation would not be a big concern.
Most of our business there will be midday. I mean, that's, most of the shit, most of the trucks pick up late morning, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was just going to say. I was just going to say, just because of the whole use carries with going forward, do we want to, or?
I mean, a wholesaler is not some.
If there were a retail aspect to it, I think ours might be something we, but a wholesaler, I don't think.
Sure.
Number one, they aren't going to have the type of traffic that would be generated by a retailer, and number two, they're kind of going to do it when it's convenient for them, and it's not going to be an all-day sort of thing.
I, I would venture to say that I think this, I don't know, unless I'm misunderstanding, this is a fairly conservative interpretation of wholesale goods as well, because, I mean, I guess it sort of is, I guess it sort of is technically, I mean, I guess it technically exchanges hands, I guess it technically exchanges ownership at this location.
It's kind of like processing. Yeah.
All right. Well, I think we've hit on trips. I mean, is there, is there much garbage or anything like that that's really made out of your, I mean, mostly you're packing stuff up, not taking it off a pallet, so.
Yeah, and we sell everything. Even the barrel, even used barrels, so there is no waste whatsoever.
That's good to hear.
Yeah.
Anything else?
They go to Scotland.
Anything else from the board? Further record, is there any one else who wishes to speak with us regarding the case for 2310 Main Street? Just note that there's no public comment for this case. And if there's nothing further, then I guess we'll close the record and begin our deliberations. Doesn't sound to me like there are any special considerations for us to be placing as we review these standards? Okay. So with that, we will review the standards for special use as we forward our recommendation to the City Council. Standard number one, the requested special use is one of the special uses listed in the zoning ordinance, and we note that it is as a wholesale goods establishment. Standard number two, the requested special use is in keeping with the purposes and policies of the Comprehensive General Plan and the zoning ordinance. We would note that the special use is allowed in such, in this location, per the zoning ordinance as a special use, that it's an existing facility that would be maintained in similar, in similar fashion to its existing setup, and that it's also in proximity to similar, similar uses, so I believe this standard has been met. Standard number three, the special use will not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types in the immediate neighborhood and the effect of the proposed type of special use upon the city as a whole. I'm going to take two seconds here to just quickly, is like something like a Sam's, is that, that's a wholesale, is that a wholesale goods establishment in our?
I don't know off the top of my head exactly how staff classified it. It likely could go either way, since it does have.
I guess what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to clarify is whether or not there should be any conditions that make this such that they, it does not become a location that has a lot of actual, like, I mean, if this is long, long, long-term, then it could become something that has a lot more traffic, in theory.
I would say, though, that based on the two different types of businesses, that, I mean, this is not a, this is not a location that seems to lend itself toward retail or people coming into it, unlike a building like a Sam's, because they just have the.
Yeah, I know it doesn't lend itself, I know it doesn't necessarily lend itself, I was just trying to, I was just trying to be conservative and wonder, what is, 10 years from now, what does wholesale goods mean to somebody?
I mean, we can specify what the type of business is.
We just might want to cover something like that, I'm just thinking about that.
I mean, just by the definition of wholesale, aren't they just specifically selling to other businesses, so?
Not necessarily, they could be selling.
That wasn't the definition that you, that Melissa read. It, I thought, that's why I asked the question, it was, it defined that it was for sale to entities that ultimately make the sale to consumers.
Yes, but that can become a much more, that can be a much higher trafficked, much more involved sort of thing.
Given the lack of a storefront, I see it mostly as a non-issue.
All right. Anyways, we can, we can look at that, but I thought of that as I was looking at the next, at the next standard, which is, standard number three, the special use will not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types on the immediate neighborhood and the effect of the proposed type of special use upon the city as a whole. The proposed use will not, does not appear that it will have a negative cumulative effect within that neighborhood. Again, it's an existing building and similar use and has similar uses around it. It does not seem to be a competitive issue with any of that. As well, the proposed special use, it would not be negative upon the city as a whole. It's certainly a benefit to help, to help our businesses grow and, and improve their sales in a, in a location that's consistent with this type of use and traffic, so I believe this standard has been met. Standard number four, the requested special use does not interfere with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood. Again, this is an existing location, building with loading docks for this type of purpose, and we don't have any indication from the neighborhood that, that this type of use has been an issue or should be diminished, so therefore, it does not seem that this is adverse upon the enjoyment and therefore a value of property in the neighborhood, so I believe this standard has been met. Standard number five, the requested special use can be adequately served by public facilities and services. Again, existing building, of, there will be very, very little traffic in terms of patronage and things like that, and I see no reason that it should require any level of additional public services or facilities, so I believe this standard has been met. Standard number six, the requested special use does not cause undue traffic congestion. Again, as noted, this is a facility with loading docks. The applicant has indicated that there will be a mid-sized truck headed into this, in and out of this facility approximately three to four times a week. It is on a main thoroughfare in and out of the city, and would be consistent with that type of location, so I believe this standard has been met as well. Standard number seven, the requested special use preserves significant historical and architectural resources. Essentially, this standard is not applicable because of the existing building, and I believe this standard has been met. Standard number eight, the requested special use preserves significant natural and environmental features. Again, we are reusing an existing building, so certainly the standard has been, has been met, if applicable at all. Standard number nine, the requested special use complies with all other applicable regulations of the district in which it's located and other applicable ordinances, except to the extent in which such regulations have been modified through the planned development process or the grant of variation. We have not heard any indication from staff that there isn't exist, any issues with the compliance of the existing location, and certainly the applicant will be required to maintain their licenses with the city and state as necessary for their purposes of their business. And with that, we have run through the standards. Is there any discussion or motion with respect to our recommendation to the City Council?
I move in the matter 13ZMJV-0045 on the application for the property at 2310 Main Street, that the Zoning Board of Appeals recommend that City Council grant the special use requested.
Second.
Should we add our substantial compliance with testimony and documents?
So, yeah.
Absolutely.
And that's, that amendment is seconded as well?
Second, the amendment, sorry.
Uh, then, the motion has been made with the friendly amendment and seconded, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. The motion is carried unanimously, so good luck with council. Thank you very much. And on to our final case for this evening, 1940 Dempster Street, and you can read it in when you're ready, Melissa. Just a moment, she's going to read it in, and then we'll have you up.
Kristen White, L.A.C., applies for a special use permit for a resale establishment, Kazoom, at 1940 Dempster Street. 1940 Dempster Street is located in the C1 Commercial District, which requires a special use permit for resale establishments to operate, zoning code section 610-23. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to City Council, the determining body for this case. Documents included with this case are the special use application submitted May 8, 2013, standards form, zoning analysis, plat of survey dated September 20, 2011, site plans, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map, and spark draft meeting minutes of May 15, 2013.
Do you, sir, refer him to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, you can lift that up a little bit, so we can hear you better, and.
Sorry. Dropping my bag, dropping the mic, starting off good.
Um, and if we could have your name and address before you get into your presentation?
My name is Kristen White, and my address is 1801 Hartree Avenue in Evanston.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thanks for having me here tonight. I'm applying for a special use permit to launch a new children's resale store in Evanston called Kazoom. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. We are seeking the special use permit to open at 1940 Dempster and the Evanston Strip Mall, or Evanston Plaza Strip Mall. We will be selling like-new essentials for children from birth to age eight, including clothing, accessories, shoes, infant gear, and toys. Our own market survey tells us that 75% of Evanston families occasionally or regularly shop children's resale, with 60% of those families being dissatisfied with the resale options available in our community. Evanston has an unusually high concentration of families who would choose to shop resale because it aligns with their values and their pocketbook. Our goal is to open a permanent store at 1940 Dempster within 12 months, but we are starting out with a monthly resale event. Kazoom will be open for buying hours four days a week, and we will host a weekend resale event one time a month, or one weekend a month. Kazoom will draw new families into Evanston Plaza, the type of consumers that can benefit many of the existing businesses in that location. Residents of the second ward have voiced preferences to see locally-owned, family-supported businesses in Evanston Plaza, and Kazoom fits that bill. We have received tremendous support and positive feedback from numerous members of the Evanston community, and we are eager to begin operations as soon as possible to take advantage of back-to-school shopping time. Our long-term goal is to build a chain of hip, fun, and youthful children's resale stores, and we would be proud to call Evanston our home base.
Okay, so just to clarify a few things, this is a first venture, first location venture for this process, okay. Do you, what, are there other, are you, what other locations are, would be like your competitors in Evanston?
There are three children's resale stores on the North Shore, one of which is in Evanston on Dempster, right at the Viaduct, Hand Me Downs.
Okay, yeah.
And there are a handful of stores down in Chicago, like in Lincoln Park, there's a couple, and sort of west of there, but there's nothing really between Lincoln Park and Evanston, and then just the three stores on the North Shore.
Okay, so essentially, the only other one in Evanston is the one that's had the Viaduct and Dempster.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Which is the one I was thinking of, but I couldn't, I wasn't sure how many more there were, so, okay. And because you're in the shopping center, clearly parking is not, not an issue for, for you or your employees.
Right.
Okay.
I'd just add that that parking center is, has a lot of vacant storefronts, so there's plenty of parking.
Yes, uh, duly noted.
Not to mention built-in clients and providers with DCE right there.
Right, right next door, and there's a new pediatric clinic two doors down.
Yeah.
So it's a great opportunity.
Can you tell us a little bit more about the market study?
Sure. Well, I did just general research on the industry nationally and locally, to look at different operational models and just profitability and all that kind of primary statistics. And then I did a survey locally, I got responses from about 140 families, most of them live in Evanston, and I was really trying to understand where, what are their buying preferences or habits, where do they go now? Do they shop resale, do they sell resale, and what are, what would entice them to do that? I consider myself my primary demographic, and the responses to the survey kind of underscored that. And I asked them about if they shop resale, if they sell resale, what kinds of services would they want to see in place in a resale store that would make them want to sell to a resale, because it's actually very difficult to get rid of your kid's stuff in a typical resale store. You can wait weeks or months to get an appointment, there's limitations on how much you can bring in, or what kinds of things, or seasonal items, and it's very, you have to be very strategic and very organized in how you unload that stuff. So the goal of Kazoom is to really make it mindless. I mean, you can, you can sell your used car easier than you can get rid of your pack-and-play, and that's just kind of bizarre. So Kazoom is going to make it easy for parents to get rid of their stuff and buy stuff. So those are the, those are the kinds of questions we asked.
So how do you anticipate buying your stock?
Sure. Well, we will start out being open four days a week, and we will be advertising to the public that we're buying children's items, and we'll have a website, we'll be doing some mailings, and people will bring in their items into the store, and there's a couple of ways that they can do that. They can either sort of drop and dash, like, here's our stuff. They can either sort of drop and dash, like here's our stuff, call me when you have an offer. Or they can, they can wait while we go through their stuff. We have a system of how we process the inventory coming in, how we price it. We make an offer to them on what we'd like to pay for the number of items we choose to purchase and they can either accept it or decline it. If they accept it, we can mail a check or, so they don't ever have to come back in and touch the stuff again. Or they can come in and get cash. For the items we don't purchase, they have the option of coming back to the store to pick it up. Or they can choose to donate it to one of four charities, like partner charities, so that we'll kind of manage that process for them.
So that sort of begs the question, what are the four partner charities?
I'm establishing that list as we speak, so.
Got it.
But the way that is actually going to work, because most nonprofits actually don't want a whole bunch of junky stuff that's got stains on it. So we'll be selling that to a clothing recycler who will, and the proceeds of that sale will go to the designated charity. So it's a way to help give back to the community.
Which actually sort of gets to one of my questions that I was going to ask. I mean, I presume you've talked to maybe some of other, some other people that do this or whatever. I was wondering, do you, do you anticipate unsolicited just drop-off being an issue?
Sure. I haven't, I've done a lot of interviews of store owners and I actually, I haven't had a single store owner say that that was an issue.
Okay.
I think it might have come up anecdotally that once in a while that that occurred. We'll be there regularly, even though the store may not be open to the public, we'll be in the space processing inventory. So if someone did leave stuff, we would certainly remove it from the sidewalk immediately. We'll have a sign in the window letting them know it's not a, the sidewalk is not a drop-off site. So, and there's also, I, the other reason I don't anticipate that happening is there's so many other ways to get rid of your stuff in the bins around town, Salvation Army, that I don't know that we would be the first place people would think of to come and drop their stuff off at.
I would think this type of establishment, since it's a, a purchase clothes, people would not be as likely to drop things off as they would at a true thrift shop.
Yeah, I was thinking it was probably, I was thinking it was probably a little bit less likely, but I was also figuring, I know that, I know a lot of mothers who are constantly trying to get rid of all their stuff and so- Desperation at midnight.
Yeah, desperation and convenience may sort of play into, okay, well, I was going to bring this in for them to sell for me, but you know, at this point, I don't care. I'm just going to leave it. So like, I can imagine it. So that's why I thought I would ask if it was an issue, but it doesn't sound like, based on her discussions with, with similar retailers, that is a significant issue. So and certainly signage near the, near the entrance to that effect should, should help alleviate most of that. So. All right. Are there any other questions?
What are the anticipated hours of operation after you get off the ground?
In our, call it our pop-up phase, so our monthly event, I anticipate that we'll be, we'll have purchasing hours Monday, Wednesday and Friday mornings from either 9:30 or 10:00 AM to 1:00 or 2:00. We haven't finalized that schedule yet. And then on Saturdays from 10:00 to 4:00.
What about after the pop-up phase?
Then it will be regular hours-
What does that mean?
Like 9:00 AM to 7:00 AM, five days a week and then on the weekends. So one of our goals, based on our survey feedback, is that families want extended hours because if you're working, it's difficult to go and you don't want to bank all that up for the weekend. If you can run out after your kids go to bed and buy some clothes, that's sometimes convenient. So we'll have extended hours when the store actually is up and running full-time.
So as a pop-up, you're always in the same retail?
We will. So it's kind of a pop-up, but not really because we're not moving around. We're not like texting you where we are each month. We'll be in the same spot, which has its benefits.
All right. Anything else? All right. Thank you.
Okay.
That will close the record. Oh, sorry, but I will, I will, you're, you're good, but I'm, we'll note that there's, for the record, there's nobody else in the room to offer public comment, so-
Thankfully.
We don't have any public, there is no public comment on this case. And with that, we will close the record and begin our deliberations. Since everybody's fairly comfortable with this.
Just a quick question because I know we're going to get to it. What are the typical hours for most businesses in that shopping mall?
Dominix is open till 10:00. Maybe 11:00 on the weekends.
Yeah, I would think Dominix is 6:00 AM to at least 10:00 PM, if not 11:00 on weekends. It's a shopping center that doesn't really impact residential. There are townhouses across the street on Dodge, but that would be the extent of it and they're set back substantially. So I don't think there'll be any negative impact, a positive impact perhaps.
I suppose for, for long-term, long-term, you know, you know, we could, I don't expect us to be hitting our, these extents by any means, but in terms of long-term, who, you're gone and there's somebody else who's doing some, who knows what with the property. We have to sort of set our limits. So yeah, I think, you know, 6:00 to 10:00 or something like that would be, would be fine. And I also would say that similarly to our discussion that we had about the furniture place the other day, I do think that providing a little bit of clarity about, you know, children's goods or whatever to the, to the proposal helps the city in the long run in case there's any issues with what it becomes. So I think that that clarification would help as well. All right, with that, we will run through the standards for a special use. And our first standard is that the requested special use is on the list of special uses in the zoning ordinance and it is, we are considering special use for a resale establishment in the C1 commercial district. Standard number two, the requested special use is in keeping with the purposes and policies of the comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance. This is already an existing shopping center and certainly at a, and main node in the, in the city and certainly maintaining that and trying to enliven it and lease it up is of, is of something that the city would definitely want to be having, having, being supportive of. And I believe that this retail, essentially retail use in that location is certainly in keeping with the comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance. So I believe this standard has been met. Standard number three, the special use will not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types on the immediate neighborhood and the effect of the proposed type of special use upon the city as a whole. I don't recall any similar special uses in that vicinity. And I do not believe that the special use will have a negative effect on the other uses or special uses that are within that area. So I believe this standard has been met as well. Standard number four, the requested special use does not interfere with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood. As Ms. Reno mentioned, this is a fairly innocuous location with respect to other, other neighbors that might not be compatible. It's quite separated from a lot of the other residential and there's a fair amount of sort of light industrial even in the, in the general area. So as well as the fact that this is housed fully, fully within a large existing shopping center. So there should be certainly no negative impact on the value of property in the neighborhood and certainly the improvement of the, of the leasing in this center would only have a positive impact on the value of the property in the neighborhood. So I believe this standard has been met as well. Standard number five, the requested special use can be adequately served by public facilities and services. Again, this is an existing shopping center that has been set up to be adequately served by public facilities and services. And there's nothing about the proposed use that indicates that it would cause any undue stretch on the requirements of the city to serve this location. So I believe this standard has been met as well. Standard number six, the requested special use does not cause undue traffic congestion. As has been noted, this is an existing shopping center that has been fairly underleased for quite a long time. So there is plenty of, plenty of parking available. There is a light to get in and out of the shopping center along with several other entrances and exits. So there's certainly plenty of movement and space for vehicles to get in and out of the spa, in and out of the shopping center. So I believe this standard has been met as well. Standard number seven, the requested special use preserves significant historical and architectural resources. Generally, again, this standard is not applicable. However, we are continuing to use an existing structure within the city and not creating a new one. Standard number eight, the requested special use preserves significant natural and environmental features. Again, generally not applicable. We are not building anything as a part of this special use or impacting the environment around it, simply reusing an existing structure. Standard number nine, the requested special use complies with all other applicable regulations of the district in which it is located and the other applicable ordinances. And again, there is no indication that the shopping center location or the location of this use in the shopping center would not be compliant with all other regulations. So the standard has been met as well. And with that, is there a recommendation for city council?
I would move in the matter 13 MJV-0046 regarding 1940 Dempster Street that we recommend to city council the approval of a special use permit for a resale establishment specializing in children's clothing and accessories. With the condition of the hours of operation being between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM. And that the operation should be in substantial compliance with the testimony and documents that have been submitted with this case.
Second the motion.
The motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And the motion is carried unanimously. So good luck with the city council. And is there anything else before we adjourn? So with that, we are adjourned for the evening. Thank you.